Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Could we have a moment of silence? This moment of silence is for our servicemen and women that are fighting overseas on our behalf every day, and all of our first responder law enforcement, firemen, EMTs that are on the front line every single day. You know, our future, I mean, where we live right now, our first line of defense against any type of terrorism is our police department. So please, when you see a police officer, thank them for the great job that they do. So keep all of our servicemen and all of our first responders in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Okay, next time, next time. Okay, beautiful. That's all right. Okay. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, December 6, 2017 Board of Commissioners meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners Conference Room.
I think you're in the way of, is he, are you showing him?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'd like to make a motion for the reading in a minute. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, we have a little presentation. This past weekend was great. The Globe Store was loaded with people. Downtown Scranton, you couldn't find a parking spot. Everybody had a great time. We had ice skating on Wyoming Avenue, something I don't think we've ever, ever had. I never heard of us having ice skating in the streets. Everybody had a happy smile on their face. They had an opportunity for the Globe to be lit up. They had an opportunity for the chorus, they got to sing, and they had hot cocoa and cookies from Unico. And it was just a great three days. It really was. And the weather was perfect. And, I mean, this is the last time we'll have this type of event at the Globe. We'll have something else, but it won't be inside the Globe anymore. So it was a great send-off to the Globe going into the construction mode, which will be by the end of this week. Commissioner, would you like to say a few words about the event this weekend?
I thought it was, well, it was historical for one, since it's the last time there'll ever be a marketplace in the Globe ever again. And for two, I think it was, it went very well. Everyone had a great time. I thought it was something that we put together and gave a great send-off to a historical building that brought so much memories to everyone in Lackawanna County and beyond. So I was happy with the result.
Ladies and gentlemen, the injection into the downtown economy was amazing. And it wasn't just the Globe Store. It was nice because it was just, it was First Friday on top of it. And people were walking the streets on Friday. But Saturday morning, I had an opportunity to go down for the beginning before they opened the doors. And 11 o'clock, they opened the doors, and I counted no less than 1,500 people, just rough numbers, walking through the door in like a 10-minute time limit. It was amazing. It really was.
And when you walk, when you were walking around the streets Friday night, and I hadn't gone Saturday, but they had, the singers were going around the streets.
Carolers.
They were caroling. And that group is amazing. What was that?
The Scranton, well, the ones that we had right at the courthouse were the Scranton Night Rhythms. They did a good job.
They were amazing. Absolutely amazing. I'd love to get them again. They were really good.
But it just reminded you of the old-fashioned downtown with Oppenheims and the Globe. It was just amazing.
And the ice skating rink.
And the ice skating rink.
That was like a picture out of a movie or something.
And some of the pictures were shorter, some of the kids on ice, but some of these children had never, ever got skate, and it was free. Commissioner O'Quinn, would you like to say anything?
Just a great day. Thank you.
Start.
Are these lights up here?
Thank you very much to all that are here tonight. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a safe holiday season to all. Ready?
Yes.
Five, four, three, two, one. Yeah! Enjoy the marketplace.
Ladies and gentlemen, it was just, it was a great weekend. We have some of our vendors here today. Is Deborah here? Deborah, would you like to come up? Deborah Calorossi. Deborah J., Clark Summit. She's selling gloves, hats, jackets, and sweater wraps.
Good morning. It's very nice for you to allow me to come and speak to you. My name is Deborah Calorossi. I am a born and bred Scrantonian and very proud to be one. It was an extremely incredible event. We had such an outpour of people and camaraderie. Not only did it exceed my expectations, but I'm sure a lot of other vendors. It was so wonderful to see all the people together and to be able to share our stories of long ago. And I ask you to somehow, some way, continue this for all of us. And I am very proud to say that I am Scranton made, and I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thanks for participating. And we are working on next year, don't worry. Jean Padula, Carmella's Bakery, is selling awesome baked goods, the very best. Jean, tell us about, I know that you guys are selling a lot of stuff when I was walking by.
Yeah, a lot of stuff. But you were giving candy canes out to the kids, though. It wasn't helping me out at all.
Why, did he just put a smile on his face as they walked through the door?
I want to just say thank you very much for having me here today. And I'm not much of a public speaker, but I just wanted to come here just to tell you what a wonderful event that we were, we were eligible to participate in. You had at least 150 vendors that were there. Every vendor that was there, I know that they said that they had great success, knowing, knowing that that building is still there, and the way you guys decorated the building. And it was such a pleasure to show my nieces, which I took ice skating.
Ice.
It was, it was just a great, great event. A lot of work went into it, and I have to say that it's sad to see, hopefully, we can have one more at the Globe Store before. But I was just very, very fortunate to participate in the event. Commissioner O'Malley, you were there all week, and I kept on telling you, I kept on saying to you, this is unbelievable. But I just want to thank you very much. And now, as, as the days go on, I get much more business up at my place up in Main Avenue, West Grant, and Carmella's. People coming in and people showing pictures, everything like that. It was just a great event, and I just wanted to come up here and say thank you very much for letting me participate.
You're welcome.
Nice holiday. Safe, you and your families. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, he just brought up a good point. Even post-event, people were probably, like he said at his restaurant, and talking about and sharing pictures online, and sharing their online pictures, it was probably...
We didn't see the traffic, you know, from people coming afterwards. I mean, it's, he's...
I didn't think about that. That's great.
Really, really does. I mean, I, even the orders that are coming in more for Christmas, I'm getting more orders now than I'd gotten last year this early. And I have to say, it's a credit to the event.
They taste at the baked goods, and all of a sudden, it's like, wow, we're gonna go to Carmella's, we're going there. You know, I mean, that's amazing.
That's great. I'm happy to hear that.
I'd just like to thank the 150 vendors that were there. I'd like to thank our staff for the hard work. Fran Pantuso, Joe Drenzo, for really pushing it out there so people would know what was going on. Christian Powers, Scranton Made, for partnering with us. Kevin Shaughnessy and his staff, our maintenance director. What a great job they did. What a great job. Like I said, it was about the smiling faces, you know, and as much as it was about the memories of the past, it was the memories that were made. Like those little kids falling on the ice, well, their parents were taking pictures. Well, that's a memory in the future where someone says, where are we at? Well, we were down at the Globe Store, and we were ice skating. So the Globe Store still has an impact, and it has an impact since the day we bought it, whether it was a blood drive, or art, or marketplace, or whatever, until we get in there. And then when we get in there, it's gonna have a major impact on the 214,000 citizens of Lackawanna County, because they're gonna have one stop shopping for their government needs, one place, not all around Scranton, not up in Mayfield, not up on Stafford Avenue, one place, accessible by bus, accessible to everyone to get to it. It just was a great three days.
Yeah. It was awesome. It was just amazing. I am just so proud to have been a part of it. You know, I was, you know, pushing for consolidation in government for a long time, but Commissioner O'Malley is the one that chose the Globe and has made it an endeavor that I'm proud to be a part of, and our staff and everyone that's been involved have made it very special and something that I'll take with me for the rest of my life, as everyone else will that attended. And I'm sure it's extremely special to those people in Scranton and those that were, used to work at the Globe or had a part of that, you know? And I know that there was a lot of people that came in talking about, well, I used to work in this department, I worked in that department, and, you know, they just, great memories, just great, great memories of days gone by. And hopefully, we're bringing that kind of family-oriented past to our future, and I hope that it continues. And again, I thank everyone for all their help and their participation, and all I'm hearing about is Trader Joe's. I don't know.
And that went really well this weekend, too, actually. That went very well.
But that's continuing on, so Fran, good job on that one.
I'd also like to acknowledge Chris Calvi, our acting arts and culture director that's here today, that great job in, in all the stuff and the coordination, because I know there's a lot of coordination on getting everything done, from the windows to the taping up of the floors, and like I said, Kevin Shaughnessy, they just did a great job. And what I thought was really neat about it was, you just saw at the beginning, within 20 minutes, that everybody was shoulder to shoulder in there, and everybody, even they were bumping to each other, it was such a warm environment. Not talking about the heat, I'm just talking about the, just the milk of human kindness was flowing throughout the whole building, and everybody was happy, and they were all smiling, and it didn't matter if they were leaning on somebody else or walking in front of someone else, everybody was there to enjoy the weekend, enjoy their family, and enjoy the Globe and the skating. It was just great.
What about that guy with the balloons? Who was that?
I, jeez, I don't know who that was. Oh, there was a poor...
The guy with the balloons.
Making balloon animals and swords and stuff, like one person. I think he had an assistant, but he, I'll just say, I'm sure he made about a quick 3,000 balloons in like two hours, so.
First night?
For first night?
First night? First Friday.
First Friday. First Friday. He was awesome. The kids loved him.
He was. I said to him, I walked in before y'all started, I said, if I read you, I'd start stockpiling your swords and your balloon animals on the side right now, because they're blowing them up right in front of them, and it's amazing. But they had some pretty neat trinkets down there. There was one of them, I thought this was really cool. They got a bulb for your tree that says the Globe.
I didn't see that.
I got this at the end. I would've got a red one, but this was on Sunday. This is the only one they had, was the black bulb with the gold, but really nice. And then they had Christmas cards, and it's pretty cool, because those Christmas cards are actually that picture right there.
Nice.
So that's from like the 1930s or 40s, or whatever the heck that would be, Commissioner.
What are you selling there?
Yeah. I can't think of the name of the vendor, but it's a downtown vendor. And getting back to, getting back, Lavish? But getting back to what Gina just said, he said that you got these ongoing amount of people going to your business. There's a lot of these businesses that just aren't going to craft show. These were business, regular businesses, that just wanted to show their wares. So like, you know, if somebody comes in, they buy something they like, everybody had their cards out, they're going to your business after the fact. So that impact of that weekend isn't just three days, that's 365. So it was a great weekend.
Yeah, I, it was really, you did an awesome job. It went really well.
But congratulations to everyone that was involved, and it really, really mattered. Okay, we're gonna go into proclamation presentation, 17-0317. Commissioner Cummings.
Family Pharmacy of Carbondale. And we have Ralph and Sherri. Is Sherri? Come on up, Sherri. Sherri, Datto, is that?
Sherri Datto, right.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about your business.
Thank you for having me here today. We just opened a family-owned pharmacy in Carbondale. Actually, there was a family-owned pharmacy in Carbondale for over 50 years, and it was, my husband and I were the owners of Figlumini Drugstore.
Oh, okay.
And we had that store, we owned and ran that store for 25 years, and then sold it to new owners. And then the new owners wound up selling it to Rite Aid. So there, there was no family-owned pharmacy in Carbondale at that time, and it was like, it's been maybe over 50 years since that's ever happened. So, you know, we got acquainted with a gentleman, Dennis Doherty, and asked him if he'd like to open another pharmacy in Carbondale. I mean, the public outcry of not having a family-owned pharmacy and just chains, you know, the public outcry was overwhelming. So kind of my husband and I thought, well, maybe we should kind of get back into it again. So now we're managing a family pharmacy at Carbondale, and, you know, bringing back that personal touch back to pharmacy, and knowing everybody by their first name, and getting in, people in and out quickly, and a little bit, you know, actually, a lot more personal than just maybe a chain drugstore. Nothing against the chains, it's just, it's different, you know, in a, in a mom-and-pop type pharmacy.
It is. It's more personal. And, you know, that's what makes, you know, I always, I always say, they're always talking about bringing big companies into our area, but what about the people that are here that can open up and thrive and bring us business and, through their own innovation and their ideas? And I'm proud to have you here, and thank you so much for stepping up to do that and bring a personal touch to Carbondale in this endeavor. And I wish you all the luck in the world, and very proud that you're here to tell us about it.
Thank you. We're proud as well. Thank you very much for inviting us.
You're welcome.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Thank you for doing that also, while opening that family-owned pharmacy. I still use a local family-owned pharmacy in Scranton. I'm not a believer in the big box stores. And I think it's great that you did that, you took the initiative, and it's nothing easy about it.
No, there's not.
There's not.
Thank you.
And good luck, and I hope it all works out well for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sherri, to you and your husband, you got out of it. You were out of it.
I got out of it.
And then, no, you were out of it, and you saw what was going on, and you came back. And there's nothing like it. Listen, Rite Aid, CVS, they're, they're great. I mean, it's great people that work there. But when you own it and you're part of it, really, really, like, your customers become your family and your friends, and it's amazing to you. And you're thinking, I mean, they come in and they'll be telling you complaints about something, you'll tell them, go to aisle such and such, they have this type of white man, or this type of pill that you could take that's over the counter, like, they come to ask you that because they trust you, because they know who you are and that you're part of their community, and you really care. And you and your husband do that, and it really, really matters. We have a, I go to the prescription center downtown Scranton, owned by Mike Rowan. Sister has her prescription center in Southside, same thing. Families go to these because they trust the pharmacist, because the pharmacist is the owner, and that's amazing. Or, you know, I mean, the people are just concerned with their well-being, and they know that the people that run this establishment are just as concerned.
We feel the same way. You know, we know everybody, again...
Yeah, by name. Hey, Bill, how are you? Hey, Fred.
I've known people all my life, actually.
Yeah.
And like I said, they become your friends, they become your family.
Yes.
And you are there, you're accessible, and they see you every day, and they can call you at home if they need something, or, so we're, we're very proud of that. And that's kind of why we got back into it again, because we felt badly that that, something that was ingrained in us for, really, my entire adult life, was missing. It was gone. So I know that sounds cliche and maybe silly, but...
No, it doesn't. It sounds great.
But it's actually true. It becomes part of you, so, so we're very proud.
Our world needs kindness, and that's what you show when people come through your doors.
Thank you.
So, but no, thank you for what you and your husband do, and it's not easy owning your own business. All of us, you know, understand that up here. All of us are involved with businesses, but congratulations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cummings.
So today, we're going to provide a certificate of recognition. The County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Family Pharmacy of Carbondale, a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this sixth day of December 2017, by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Nocarianni, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up.
Come on up for the picture. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Great job.
I'm gonna go on the other side. There we go.
There we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One more, one, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm proud to come up here and have some kind of anything coming. I'm sorry. You have any of that coming? Oh, okay. Okay, something coming. I'll stop. We're good for you. We're ready. Just enough to ask for, Bob.
Yes, absolutely.
If you ever need this, you call us, okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Any community reinvestments, or you do any work on the building, give us a call.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
But that's, that's really what it's about. It's about family, and it's Main Street USA, and really giving back. Congratulations. At this time, at late 17-0318, this is a Gubert's in Lackawanna County certificate for Mike Gigliotti of Carbondale. Would you guys like to step up to the microphone?
John Michael Gigliotti.
Michael Gigliotti.
What do I say?
Let me tell you, watching the news, three weeks ago, about three weeks ago, I would say.
Almost three weeks ago.
And I saw you on TV, and you were worried about the safety and how the lights were lit up for the traffic lights that they were... Talked about it.
What do I say? I need help. We'll just tell them what...
Tell us about the lights look dull, didn't they look, they weren't really as...
Well, here's the problem, because they were the pixel LEDs, and the yellow bulbs were in good distance, so it didn't provide a very high visibility for the traffic lights in Carbondale. And the reason why I wanted, what, the reason why I contacted my friends at Kuhart construction and got a Exeter and Signal Control Products in Sodderton, which is in Montgomery County, which is in the Philly area, because what I want to do for the city of Carbondale is to provide better traffic signals and pedestrian-related signals.
Saving the money, too, apparently?
Uh-huh, yeah.
How much are you saving?
I think, well, Stacy Lane from WNEP said about almost three weeks ago, it was on the 17th, it was in, it was Friday, the 17th of November, it was about $5,000. It could've cost the city of Carbondale $5,000.
Wow. So that's what you're saving. Good for you.
Commissioner Cummings?
That's awesome. And you just thought, just because you looked up at the lights, you decided to help out?
Well, the traffic lights, and because the pedestrian signals are burnt out.
Okay.
But what I wanted, well, for the start, I want to do for the city of Carbondale is make sure that, that the traffic lights are safe and they don't...
Have them upgraded?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's very nice of you. That, that's, that's an honor. It's an honor to have you here, and that you're thinking of other people ahead of yourself, and making sure that your fellow citizens are taken care of, and you're also saving the money. And that's something I always look at.
Well, the municipality of the city of Carbondale is saving a lot of money, because for the municipality itself, I just want to make, I just, yeah. When I first moved to Carbondale in 2002, I knew the lights weren't that great, because I'm originally from Salisbury, Maryland, and, trust me, Salisbury, Maryland had better traffic lights than Carbondale did.
Yeah, but you're there to make sure that they upgrade, so...
Thank God you're there. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
John Michael, it says in this report here that the manufacturer said that you knew more about than half of his engineering staff.
I do.
John Michael, would you explain to the people here, your involvement with color products and bathroom fixtures, and what you did for Carbondale up there?
Oh, that was about like six years ago. Okay. So one, so I went to Russell Park the one day, and I realized, wow, the bathrooms needed to be upgraded. So I partnered with American Standard out of Piscataway, New Jersey, who donated their time...
Wow.
Eight thousand dollars. Eight thousand dollars. Yes. That, that was before I did the traffic lights recently.
Awesome.
And...
And that was during the Great Recession.
Jeez.
Founded that, when he connected with American Standard, that they, they took it through with them. And all we did was pick colors.
But John Michael was able to convince the president of that corporation to help Carbondale.
Very good.
Good job, John.
Good job.
John, we're gonna introduce you to our maintenance director. He may need some, he may need some tips. I'm not sure exactly. You have you walk through the Globe with them and stuff, the County Government Center.
Save us.
His name's Kevin. Kevin Shaughnessy, he's the director of maintenance. Yeah. Everywhere, all the buildings. Yeah. Yeah. You got him right afterwards. But John, you and your wife Gloria, congratulations. Your son really matters to our community. And like I said, when he was on the news...
My mother's, my mother's, my mother's working as a behavior consultant for an agency right now.
That's all right. But I know your mom's, you're right in the middle of her heart, but just a great job in making sure that everybody's safe. And like I said, it truly is. I, I never thought about it till I was watching on TV. I've been to a light where the lights were dull, and you're looking at it, you're thinking, is that yellow? Is it red? Is it, you know, is it green? And it, and you really can't tell, and you're kind of taking a chance, but...
Yeah, well, the thing is, I didn't realize... Yeah, well, the thing is, uh, I didn't realize it until he started educating me.
Yeah.
You can see the difference.
Yes, and like you said, you know, I mean, especially if you're in a hurry, you really will, you know, I mean, you get yourself in trouble, but, uh, we have a certificate of recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize John Michael, in honor of achieving a designation as an individual providing not just good works, but great works in Lackawanna County, given the sixth day of December two thousand seventeen, on behalf of the two hundred and fourteen thousand citizens by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry Natariani, and Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Could I come forward with your dad? Congratulations, turn right around here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Jerry, great job. Stand right next to your son, okay.
All right.
All right, nice going.
Thank you.
Just a down a little jump, so I can see you're smiling.
Yeah, we see you.
Perfect, here we go, all smiles, big smiles, here we go, one, two, three, one, two, three, one more, one, two, and three.
What's the next, what's the next project?
It's, it's gonna probably be, well, Mayor Taylor already applied for the Green Light Go Grant for the city of Carbondale, so maybe my traffic light project will possibly move forward.
Congratulations, thank you so much, Jerry, thank you too.
Two thousand two.
It was great on the news.
Appreciate it.
And I, I have to go up to see him. You know, I work at the top of all...
Let's Keith, Keith, why don't you come forward, give Keith the mic, 'cause I think Keith, Keith'd like to save your words?
Keith?
Keith Williams.
Oops.
Put the mic over there so Keith can speak for a second. One second, John, this is a good friend of ours, Keith Williams, he makes sure that we keep our county building running the right way, and everything is set for everybody.
Yeah, that's my guy, thank you.
Keith, thanks for being here, first and foremost, as usual.
Morning.
Morning.
Commissioner, it's, it's great to see, uh, John, and I think one other thing, and I just happened to catch that story as well.
Yeah, it was a great story, wasn't it?
Seeing him here today, and I think it really speaks to the contributions that, um, the everyday average citizen can make.
Yes.
In the community, and you, you don't necessarily have to be an elected official...
That's right.
Or have any kind of, uh, formal involvement in government, anything like that, it's the community, it really works from the grass, the grassroots level, and, and kinda flows upward, should filter upward, and I, and I congratulate, uh, John for all, and his family, for all the work, um, that they've, that they've done, and, uh, um, and, uh, I guess I'm more of a pedestrian than a driver, although I can...
So, yeah, you'd understand.
It just happens to depend on how, on how that my driving is that day, but I can, but I can speak to the importance of what you're talking about, John, and the clearness of, uh, of, of traffic lights, and, uh, making sure that, that everybody is able to see themselves.
Safe.
Congratulations on a job well done.
Thanks, Keith, congratulations, John.
Thank you very much, thanks, John.
Thank you for coming in.
Take care.
Seventeen dash zero three one nine, Bernie McGurley, Lackawanna, Lackawanna River Cons- Conservation Association Executive Director, promoting the voting of the Lackawanna River, which I am very, very happy to say there's trout, and it's a great place to visit.
Commissioner.
He, he's going to once.
He doesn't need to, Andrew.
Yeah, it was, that was awesome. And, you know, I, I have run, I thought it was just me, I couldn't see the light, I thought it was just the way I was looking at it.
Something, he's right, the light sometimes, even if the color wears out, or the bulb is...
Yeah, why does it do that?
The color goes on, and I'm like, well, it's really, you know, it's really yellow, erratic, I think it fades, and you have to watch something.
Yeah, because you can't even see which one it is.
Commissioners, uh, thanks for the opportunity.
Before you start, first and foremost, I wanted to say, see how nicely clean that river is? Thirty years ago, it was brown, it smelled, it was horrible, and if there was fish in there, you'd be scared to eat them, there was more carts, there was more sewage in there, today it's beautiful, it's clean, there's fish in it, people fish in it, people walk along and on our trails, it really matters, you don't have to hold your nose going over a bridge over that river, it's the Lackawanna River, when I was a kid, I was a Lackey, Bernie, I'd like to thank you for all the...
For all the carts that you've pulled out of there through the years, which really, really matters, and everything else.
Thank you, Commissioner, uh, I had a lot of help, it's a big river, it flows forty miles through, uh, uh, four counties, uh, rises up in Susquehanna and Wayne County, uh, north of Uniondale, and flows down through, uh, Forest City, and, and down into Lackawanna County, and Vanley, and Simpson, and Carbondale, and on down through the Mid Valley, and Scranton, and down through, uh, Taylor and Old Forge, and off into Luzerne County, and Durye, and Pittston, where it flows into the Susquehanna River, so it's our connection with the Susquehanna watershed, it's our connection there through the Chesapeake Bay, so we're at the top of the watershed, uh, in Pennsylvania, up here, so what we do here is critical to the clean water across the entire Chesapeake Bay drainage system, so we have a special role to play, and we've been doing a great job as a community commissioner, there's been a lot of shopping carts, I think you've pulled a few out yourself.
Couple two, three, but not as many as you.
And, uh, your, your, uh, fellow Commissioner, Jerry Natariani, Jerry's been working on the river for a long time, too, we were in the first canoe-athon back in nineteen seventy, uh, seventy-two or seventy-three, and, uh, so the river's come a long way, and to highlight that, we've actually reached out, there's a statewide program called the Pennsylvania River of the Year, and the state designates, uh, one river in Pennsylvania to be recognized with, uh, some special attention every year, uh, we've, it is a nominating process, and you have to vote for it, so we're, uh, we're in competition with, uh, four other rivers across Pennsylvania, rivers in, in some big streams that have large watersheds, and we need everybody in the northeast Pennsylvania region to come out and vote for the Lackawanna, so, we've got, um, it's called, uh, P A River of the Year dot org, and go to their website, P A River of the Year dot org, and vote for the Lackawanna, and you vote electronically, use your email address, and, uh, one, one vote per email, so you can vote, uh, you can vote at work, and you can, you can vote at home, too, um, so it's a great way to give the river some recog- some additional recognition, so if we get the designation, it's gonna mean we'll be able to do a number of other activities along the river next year, in addition to the, uh, to the activities that we usually do with our, uh, River Fest, uh, which is gonna be Mother's Day weekend, we had a really busy year this year, and I wanna thank the commissioners for supporting our thirtieth anniversary celebration, uh, we did, uh, actually more than thirty things in more than thirty days, uh, during the summer, and leading up into September, and our, uh, big celebration on October the fifth, but we're looking forward to the year ahead, we've got a whole variety of activities, starting with Shiver Fest on, uh, Saturday, January thirteenth, get out and paddle the river in the wintertime, and, uh, then we're gonna have River Fest on, um, uh, May fourteenth, I believe it is, so we're, uh, we're looking at, um, a whole bunch of other issues, the river has, still needs everybody's attention, it's something that we need to do every day.
It's ongoing.
Ongoing, you got it, it's all part of the process, so when we make our decisions, that you guys make your decisions, commissioners, our local elected officials at the borough and city level, and township level, uh, have to make decisions, one of the big issues we're looking at is how to manage, how to do a better job at managing stormwater, we have issues with FEMA and deficiencies in our flood control programs, so we're at, we're actually advocating also the, uh, the development of a, a stormwater agency, uh, we're working with the city of Scranton right now, and I wanna, uh, compliment, uh, Mayor Courtrite and, uh, City Council in Scranton, uh, we're actually participating in a study over there, and we're, we're gonna be looking at ways, uh, to, uh, involve more and more of the communities in, in the watershed with, uh, a stormwater agency that can really help consolidate government services in, in, at, at, at that level, so, but the important thing right now is to get the river elected, selected as, uh, River of the Year, so I, I wanna just encourage everyone, uh, in the audience, uh, that gets to see this presentation on ECTV to give us your vote, please, we need your vote, we've got some stiff competition out there, and I, I just checked the standings, and we're last, we gotta move up. So, we need everybody in the Lackawanna watershed to come out and vote, P A River of the Year dot org.
When are you allowed to vote till?
Uh, till, uh, December twenty-second, so...
We got time.
Get up, vote early, folks, vote early, we need your votes.
We did put it on our website, too.
You put it on our website?
We put it on our website.
Can we make sure when our community relations people go out, that they bring these with them, to get them out to all the municipalities, forty municipalities, let them know that we need their help, you know, and maybe, uh, maybe Lamar might put up a billboard for you, they, I think they would.
Sure.
Saying, you know, I mean, that's something we could look into, too.
And I know there's a, there's an article in the paper this morning, so, uh, Fran, I'll get these over to you electronically, so you can have them, um, it's also on our Facebook page, uh, just, uh, visit Facebook and look for Lackawanna River Conservation Association, L R C A, and, uh, we've got a whole bunch of great information on our Facebook page as well.
Well, Bernie, I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, that Lackawanna River be the number one river in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, can I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Natariani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes.
Yes, 'cause it really matters, water matters to all of us, you can't eat water, you drink water, water matters, so, uh, why don't we, uh, Fran, why don't we have Bernie come up for a quick picture, maybe you can put out in the smaller papers, and we could put the website and everything else, which they can, you know, come on up, Bernie, great job.
Thanks.
Good job, Bernie.
Why didn't pull any carts out, and you didn't go canoeing, but I appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you, thank you very much, Commissioner, pardon me.
Thank you, Bert, thank you.
Thank you, Bernie McGurley, um, this time I'd like to have our maintenance director, Kevin Chauncey, come up to the podium to give us a little bit of a background report on the children's library.
What's going on live?
I'll just, um...
Okay, buddy. Uh, we had a meeting on Tuesday the twenty-eighth of December, myself, Mary Garm, architect Tom Hurlacher, and, um, my assistant, administrative assistant James Hart, she gave me, uh, Mary gave me a wish list, or, or, you know, some of the things that they believe they need to get done over there, um, it was a very productive meeting, um, we, we went over, we walked through the whole facility, uh, looked at everything, and right now I'm at the stage where I'm getting different contractors in there, getting free prices, you know, getting prices for, for everything that, that they believe needs to be done, um, and that, and that I believe needs to be done, and, and that's where, basically where we're at, we're still waiting for the prices to come in, and then, you know...
You'll come back to the board and just give us an idea?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um, they, they, I mean, they, they have, uh, I have like McClure coming in and taking a, doing an overall look at their heating and cooling system, um, I have Harley and Escrow looking at, on the foundation, there's some cracks where they're getting some water into the basement, so we're just getting different prices for things like that.
Is that where the water leak is that they're talking about?
You know, I, I, I seen evidence of a past water leak, I don't even know if it's happening so much now, um, but there certainly is, there is, uh, caulking issues on the steps and, and in the foundations to the right and to the left of the building, that, that definitely do need to be caulked.
They just haven't been caulked in years or anything.
Yeah, the caulk has fallen out or, or dissipated, and, you know, so, it's general maintenance that hasn't been done in, in, in a while, so, uh, and like I said, we're, we're getting prices, and, uh, I will...
Why do you have to get prices, why can't you do that?
Um, some of these caulking issues are, are such that you have to get an actual, uh, a, a concrete saw, and cut seams, and, and put this, this caulking in there that are, you know, a little bit beyond our, our maintenance, uh...
But you, you would do everything that we can do in-house?
Yeah, oh, we're doing, we're doing a lot of stuff in-house, like, uh, they have these big, the, the big wooden doors on, on the front, on the face of the building that, uh, we're gonna put an ADA feature on there, not so much for the ADA, because they have, on, on the side of the building, they have an ADA feature with ramps, we're doing it for the children, because the doors are big wooden, heavy doors, and the children just can't, you can see, I was watching them, they can't open the doors, so we're gonna put a pump on there that automatically opens, and we're gonna put like a, maybe like for the children, uh, something...
Is that like we have over the courthouse, like, for anybody to come in?
Yeah, but, you know, maybe instead of the handicap cap sign on there, maybe something for the kids, so that it's fun for them to press...
Yeah.
And the door opens up for them nice, you know, uh, you know, things that, we could do that in-house, uh, those exact doors I'm talking about are old, very old wooden doors.
They're a hundred years old.
They need to be refinished, so I'm thinking about taking one down, there's three, three sets, taking them down one at a time, bringing them back to our shop, refinishing them and putting them back up, uh, the, 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 the boys and girls bathrooms each need, they're, they're just not, they're not kid-friendly, they're, they need to be updated, it's old ceramic tile that's falling off the walls, things like that, you know, it needs to be updated, more relevant for a children's library.
This is a county-owned facility, too, Kevin?
Yes.
We, we own the building, so that's the reason we're more involved with it, it's not owned by, uh, private nonprofit, we own the building, and we have responsibility to maintain it and keep it up to a hundred percent standards, as you told us.
Yes, yeah, yeah, it just, I mean, it needs some more, it, it needs to be, uh, some more updates, you know, uh, like I said, the bathrooms are, are old, and, and they, they certainly need to be updated, so we're, we're, we're getting a, we're getting a pricing, and we'll put that together, and advise.
And, and Mary Garm said on behalf of the library board they're satisfied with the direction we're taking, Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, she seemed to be very happy.
Thank you.
So, we're, aren't they also, don't they close the main library, and you're utilizing the children's library?
They did, when I was over there, a lot of the employees from the, the library were over in the children's library, setting up their offices over there, uh, because they're doing renovations over there, at, at the, at the main library, yep.
So they're also doing renovations at the main library?
Yes.
What are, what are those...
Now, I, you know, we, I don't think, we don't get into that library, we're not really...
That's owned by the Albright Memorial Library, correct?
So we're not responsible?
No.
No, they're, yeah, they're, they're just, you know, being, letting them come over and use their offices.
They, they do, they're using new own resources through the, uh, library tax funds to, uh, repair those facilities that they, they obtain.
Correct.
Well, then, that, that's our tax money, so...
Well, it, it, it is, it is our tax money, but we don't physically own the building, Commissioner.
Why are we paying for the repairs?
No, I'm sorry, the repairs at the Albright Memorial Library?
They're two different...
Two different libraries, right.
Yeah, that's not us at all.
What are they doing over at the main library, are we paying for all the stuff that we're doing over at the main library?
No, that's not our building, nope.
No, well, they, they, they obtain, they, well, they obtain money from the, from the county tax fund for the libraries, and they obtain money from the state, and so they're doing the repairs with, with the money they have, indirectly, it's, it's, it's county taxpayers' money.
That's what I'm saying, why are we paying for the repairs of a building we don't own?
Well, we have a responsibility to, uh, to maintain the building, I mean, that's the main library, I, I don't...
I thought we owned that, so if we don't own that, I mean, that's not your fault, you know?
Yeah, I know, I didn't even go over there.
But now that you, you know, I mean, you just opened a can of worms.
No, there's, I believe there's seven libraries in Lackawanna County, if I'm not mistaken, and, uh, all the libraries are, are maintained, and they all receive annual allocations through the, uh, county library tax fund, and they've got a responsibility to maintain all of the libraries, we don't go and oversee the independent libraries, but the former Christian Science Building, the county actually owns the children's library, that's, we have a direct responsibility to maintain that library on our own.
Sorry, Andy, for interrupting you, but, but let's just stick to the main library that I'm talking about, not bringing in any other library, so we have a main library that is currently under renovations and is closed, and the staff is over at the children's library, what are the renovations we're doing at the main library, and are we paying for
to each one of the libraries to do work, and we don't oversee that. We don't tell them who to employ. We don't-
So, who owns the building?
Maybe Joan can answer.
I think I can help you out here. I spoke to Jack Finerdy, who is the director of the Scranton Public Library just a few days ago. Now-
Who owns the building?
The Albright Memorial, the Scranton Library Foundation does. Scranton Public Library Foundation has owned the building since 2010. It used to be owned by the city, and then the deed was transferred in 2010 to the Scranton Public Library Foundation. However, with regard to the renovations on the interior, I think before you make the blanket statement that it's coming out of the library tax, you need to talk to Jack Finerdy, because I have a different impression for him. Now, I am not on the trustees of that library facility, but I think before, Mr. Wallace, before you make that statement-
Neither am I. I stand corrected. What I said is that county taxpayers are indirectly supporting the library.
Because I think what you need to do, Commissioner Cummings, is contact Director Finerdy directly and ask him where those funds came from. I'm under the impression that it is coming from a different type of source. However, I don't know, because I'm not a trustee.
I stand corrected.
I'm not a trustee, so before we make that kind of blanket statement, perhaps after the meeting, you can contact Mr. Finerdy directly. Yes, they have put some staff into the children's library so that they can continue some basic operations. For example, if somebody was waiting for a book to come in, and they had, they closed the facility because it's just impractical and unsafe to have patrons and staff in there while they're doing this interior work, period. That's why they closed it, so to speak. If you go up there, you will see a humongous hose coming out of the front door for ventilation. So, it's just a safer and more efficient way to get those renovations done. Remember, that building is 125 years old. Some of the renovations they are doing will be, for example, the interior carved woodwork had never been refinished in 125 years. So, that's being cleaned up, you know, and 125 years takes a total long-
It's an historical building, and I know there's certain things you can't-
That's the issue I'm having. And Joan, I thank you for coming up, but honestly, you can't answer the questions.
I can't, but I'm saying, I can't agree with Mr. Wallace's initial comment that's coming out of the library tax fund.
What I meant was that county taxpayers are supporting the mission of the county library, giving an allocation to them, and as a result, we're supporting the library where they're paying the exact bill for renovations. I cannot address that at all. And I said, this is the third time, I stand corrected.
Yeah.
And this doesn't come out of, this doesn't come of our immediate county budget rate or not whatsoever?
No, not to my knowledge, okay?
Yes.
And keep in mind that the Albright Memorial Library and the entire Scranton Public Library system, which includes a facility in Greenridge, the Nancy Kamehoms Library, and the Library Express at the Mall, that's one of seven county libraries. We have a county library system. So, even though it is a Scranton Public Library and you don't own the building, it's still part of the county library system, serving the citizens-
Lackawanna County.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. But here's my problem with this whole thing. I thought we owned both buildings, okay? So, they're paying for renovations, if they're paying, I don't know if they are or not, but if they're paying for renovations in a building that we don't own, and they're asking us for money to pay for renovations in the building that we do own, well, sorry, but that just doesn't fly with me, and this, I need more information on this. So, I would like to figure out what in God's name is going on here, because they're looking for, I mean, we made some cuts that were made for a reason for a Speaker's Bureau, and they want that money back for renovations. Why are we paying, if we are paying for renovations in a building we don't own, I'd like to know why, if we're not.
No, 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 no.
That's okay, Joan. You don't need to object.
We own the children's library. We don't own the-
You mean that mic wasn't on the whole entire time?
Also, Pat, I would like to add that we're not spending any money at this point. What I'm doing is just putting money-
That's, but it has to come in front of us.
Yeah.
Because this is our building. Those other buildings are not our buildings. They're taxpayers' bill.
I understand, but the fact of the matter is, is that we were asked for money for renovations in the children's library that we do own, and here they are closing the main building that we don't own and renovating that. I'd like to know who's paying for the renovations in that, and if we, the taxpayers, are paying for that, then they just squandered the money that they would have gotten me to vote for, because I will not, I will not vote for money now if they're paying for renovations in a main building that we don't even own. And I'd like to know the stats on that, because this is, like, just amazing, that things that you find out with one question, and then all of a sudden, it goes into a, this is what happens every single day here, every day. It's, it's very frustrating, but it happens every day. So, anyway, I'll look into this more, because now they just, they got Lorene Cummings on it now, so here we go.
Kevin, thanks for your time. Thanks for looking into the building. Thank you. Okay.
Opportunity.
Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only.
Joan Hodewann, it's 220 Linden Street, Scranton. I would assume that you've all saw this morning's paper and the editorial, "Fund Pension." And I have to say, I must agree with the Times Tribune on this editorial. I saw that apparently you are considering not paying out the 2017 $1 million, $1 million-
This isn't on the agenda.
It is. You have, the budget is on the agenda.
It's not even in the budget. That's last year's budget.
Yes, but it also goes into 2018 one, or $500,000.
Go ahead. Go ahead. We'll let you address it.
$500,000. So, this will be the second year in a row where you won't have put in a contribution to the pensions for your county workers. I'm concerned about that, because normally, when you invest, you try to invest your funds in what will give you the highest rate of return. And right now, the stock market is giving a 12% rate of return. Now, will that continue forever? No. But you don't want to not fund the pensions and let that go on for year after year after year, because that's an easy pot of money to grab, just like the federal government messes with Social Security. You don't want to do that, because eventually, the stock market is going to turn down and will give a lesser rate of return, and any contributions you put in will make less money. If you're going to withhold $500,000 in 2018, and it maintains a 12% rate of return, that's over $60,000, okay, that you're going to pass up. I just think that, you know, you need to think more carefully about using that as a way to help plug the holes in your budgets, because even though the 2017 budget is almost gone, that's cumulative. That's not just $500,000. It's actually going to be $1.5 million. That's $180,000 at 12% interest. So, I would ask you to think about that, and as the editorial says, take a look what happened to Scranton's municipal pensions. They played that game. They stopped paying in just before the Great Recession, because the stock market was so hot. They made the assumption that it was going to continue for a long time to come, and they are severely distressed today. You have a fiduciary responsibility, not just to taxpayers, but to your employees. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okey-dokey. No, let's wait till we get the commissioners, okay? Because, you know, that's our time to do it, and-
Yeah, I feel like I'm going to bust. That's all. I'm sorry to say.
Okay. Ordinance first reading, 17-0305.
This is the annual budget for the County of Lackawanna for calendar year 2018, and today is the first reading of the ordinance scheduled for December 6, 2017, duly advertised in the paper of general circulation in Lackawanna County. Ordinance number 251, an ordinance of the County of Lackawanna and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2018. An appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for specific purposes of county government hereafter set forth during the current fiscal year. Be it ordained and enacted, it is hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County that a tax be in the same as hereby levied on all property within the said subject to be taxation for county purposes for fiscal year 2018 as follows. Tax rate for general county purposes, the sum of 41.85 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of $418.50 on each $100 of assessed valuation. For debt purposes, the sum of 11.75 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of $117.50 on each $100 of assessed valuation. For purposes of the Lackawanna County Library System, the sum of 2.82 mils on each dollar of assessed valuation, or the sum of $28.20 on each $100 of assessed valuation. For purposes of the Culture and Education Fund, the sum of 1 mil, or the sum of 10 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. Total millage for all purposes for Lackawanna County budget is 57.42 mils. All prior ordinances or resolutions or parts there have been consistent herewith are repealed. A vote is not required. This is the first reading, Commissioners.
Thank you. Final adoption will be on Wednesday, December 20. Resolution 17-0316, approving current payables.
Be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 253502 through 254333 inclusive, totaling $3,508,973.9. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes.
Yes. 17-0306.
Entering into a Pima grant agreement, be resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby approves and enters into a grant agreement with Pennsylvania Emergency Management for the 911 Fund statewide interconnectivity funding grant in the amount of $232,643.63, and Director Dave Hawn from the Emergency Services Center is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a grant that we put in for, for this year, for $232,643.63, and it's to fund our project for the Northeast Core, which we belong to. It'll give us EZNet connection to Monroe County from our furthest tower out in Lackawanna County. We will then have a path to be able to communicate and share 911 services.
Thanks, Dave. Does the board have any questions?
No, I just have a commentary, because we went through a lengthy discussion in the meeting in regards to this. So, if you could just let everyone know about the regionalization that's actually happening with this system?
Yes. So, the past several years, the state has been pushing for regionalization of 911 services, to try to make the smaller counties go in with a larger county, that type thing. What this EZNet does is it allows us to share services such as CAD, tape recorder services, 911 services. In other words, like, our 911 switch system here at Lackawanna County cost us $1.1 million three years ago. Pima probably will not fund that going forward if a county next to us, or if we're the ones that have a 911 switch system, which can actually run several counties. So, the old, the old way of doing business is kind of going away, and they're kind of pushing and forcing us to regionalize, and that's why we need the connectivity with other counties to be able to share services.
And the purpose is, so, to pay, the state doesn't pay $1.1 million for a switch to each individual county?
Correct, yeah. I mean, that's just an estimate. That's what we paid. I don't know. Other counties would be bigger or smaller, depending on, you know, the size of switch they need. But we paid about $1.1 million, and I believe it was 14, 2014, to put our switch in. So, the switches usually last about five to seven years. So, when we come up on the end of life for our switch, we're going to have to apply for funding to Pima to either replace that switch, and if they'll allow that, and we certainly don't know that right now, or if they would fund us to connect to another county for our 911 services. So, and that's just all through the EZNet here. So, that would be through our microwave system is what this is. So, we'd be able to communicate with the additional counties, and they'd be able to connect and share information with us and them. So, in other words, like, our CAD system we just put in now, Monroe County is putting the same exact CAD system in. So, what's going to happen is, once we are connected, what we call the global information will be shared between the two counties. So, if a police car in Stroudsburg pulls somebody over that's wanted in Lackawanna County, they will get that information immediately.
Nice.
Okay, so, that's, that's what we're, that's where we're heading with this informational services. And we have to, of course, we have to have connectivity via microwave and/or fiber to be able to do this. So, that's what this is, and we will be connected to Monroe County, who then is, Monroe will be connected to six other counties, and then, so, all these other counties are basically doing the same CAD system as us. So, we will now have that global information from Bethlehem all the way up to here, all the way up to Scranton, and they'll have, or Lackawanna County, and then they'll have all our information going south. And then eventually, we will head north. But they're trying to connect everybody together and share services, which is cheaper in the long run. For instance, a recording system, which cost us $158,000 a couple of years ago, would be, we would share services, so three, maybe three counties can get on the same recording system, and then we can share the services of the maintenance contracts, which is, that's where it's really, the savings is really there. So, we spend, I think, approximately $30,000 a year on a maintenance contract. That would be, eventually, in the future here, we would share that $30,000 a year with whatever other counties would be on our recording system. So, that's the goal here, and it's statewide, and that's what we're trying to accomplish here.
Well, that's what I'm looking for, savings, but we couldn't, you couldn't provide savings because of the fact that the switch is $1.1 million, and we already paid for that. But yet, in the future-
It's going forward, ma'am.
In the future, we can possibly not have to spend that, have that expenditure, because we're going to be able to hook up with someone else's. Now, that's not a given, because I wanted that on the record, because I want future, if I'm not re-elected.
Is it a given until we apply for anything? Nothing's a given until we apply for it. So, there's a board. Pima has a board, and every year, we apply for a project, whatever that project may be, and plus our funding. The board then sits down, and they decide what projects are funded and what's not. So, I, as a director, I cannot sit here and tell you, three years from now, we'll be funded for a phone switch system. No, I can't do that, but-
No, I'm not asking for funding. I said, what was stated to me in the meeting is that we will not be looking for that $1.1 million, because we will have the ability to connect with other counties to save the state from paying that money.
Correct.
So, that's basically saving the state money, which is saving the taxpayer money.
Correct.
Is that what you're telling us today?
Yeah, basically, that's, that's how it works, yes.
Okay, so then, there will not be a $1.1 million expenditure required for this county once this switch breaks down, because we can connect with another county.
Right. That I can't promise you. No, I can't say that. We may be the county-
Oh, well, then, I can't vote for it.
No, no. We may be the county that Pima does fund for a phone switch system to connect to other counties.
So, we might get our own switch just because?
Just because we're a medium-sized county, and they may, Pima may say, the other counties need to connect with Lackawanna County. So, they may fund it, and that, that's not, has nothing to do with a taxpayer.
If they did that, would they have to, they would pay for the switch. We wouldn't have to pay for it.
Correct.
Because we paid for this $1.1 million.
We paid for quite a bit of it. I don't, I don't remember how it broke down, but I, yes, we did. We didn't have a choice, though. We, our 911 switch was at-
You could tell that to future Commissioners. Oh, you don't have a choice, $1.1 million again.
Well, when your switch breaks down, it's, it's over.
Well, if you don't have a switch, we don't have a, we don't have emergency services.
I understand that. I understand that. But what I, what I understood also was that this was being done to regionalize, so that we wouldn't have a future $1.1 million cost, and if we were, it would be shared between six other counties.
That's, that's the goal. But you're, I guess what you're, what I'm trying to say to you is, I don't know where we'll be three years from now, if we are the ones selected for the switch.
I understand that.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. I don't know, I don't know if we will be.
In preparation for that.
Correct. It's in preparation to share services in the future.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion entering into a Pima grant agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? No.
Yes. Thanks, Dave. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
17-0307.
Entering into an engagement letter with Baker Tilly, be resolved, Board of Commissioners, is hereby accepting engagement letter for Baker Tilly, 46 Public Square, Wolfsboro, to perform Lackawanna County's annual audit for the year ending December 31, 2017, at a cost not to exceed $143,000. And Tom Durk, our financial officer, is here to explain this.
Morning, Tom.
Morning, Commissioners. This is just the required engagement that we have to enter into every year with an audit firm to do the overall county audit. For the last six years, it's been Baker Tilly, and I'm recommending that we engage Baker Tilly again. They've done a very, very good job for us. In addition, the county has a lot of moving parts, and if we were to change, it would probably take, the fact that we've been doing our audits and getting them filed on a timely basis for the last six years is predominantly because Baker Tilly has been doing the work, and they don't have to train people and learn how the county works, because they have the history with the county. So, again, I'm recommending that we re-engage Baker Tilly for 2017.
Does the board have any questions? I'd just like to say that Baker Tilly does a great job, and 2011, 2012, 13, 14, 15, 16, did a great job. Tom, thanks for your time. And when will they start? They'll start the, when will they start back in spring or something?
Actually, Commissioner, we met with, as you're aware, we met with Baker Tilly for the 2016 exit conference a couple of weeks ago, and at that time, the manager in charge indicated to me that he'd be in touch with me sometime in December if we approved the engagement, for them to come in and start doing some planning work. So, probably sometime around Christmas week, they'll send a couple of people in to start doing the planning of the engagement, and then they'll be out in full force in late April, early May to do all the work.
Okay, great. I'd like to make a motion entering into an engagement letter with Baker Tilly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Tom. 17-0308.
Awarding a childcare information audit, be resolved, Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County hereby award the performance of child-
Yes, thank you Tom. Seventeen dash zero three zero eight?
Awarding a childcare information audit be resolved Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County hereby award the performance of childcare information audit to Brian T. Kelly, CPA, Carbondale, Pennsylvania for year ending June 30th, 2017, with a price not to exceed 9,000 dollars. Mr. Durkin?
Once again Commissioners, we're recommending that Brian Kelly and Associates, the firm that has done the daycare audit for each of the last three years, be engaged to do the June 30th, 2017 audit. As I mentioned to the Commissioners a number of times, it's that time of the year that we start making sure that all of our component units have engaged auditors so that when it comes time to compile all these audits for Baker Tilly, the county auditor, we're able to have all the information to them timely so that we can then complete the county audit timely. Again, Brian Kelly and Associates has done the daycare audit for the last three years, and we're recommending that we re-engage the same firm.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Durkin? I'd like to make a motion to awarding the Childcare Information Service Audit, do I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Seventeen dash zero three zero nine?
Accepting a quote from Cronos saying be resolved Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County hereby accepts a quote from Cronos for support services for the county's time and attendance system for a period of twenty, February 24th, 2018, through February 23rd, 2019, at a cost of 28,419 dollars and sixty-nine cents. Mr. Durkin?
Thank you. This is an annual maintenance agreement that we've entered into since we've engaged Cronos in 2010, I believe was when we engaged Cronos. There are time and attendance system provider, and we enter into an engagement, or, excuse me, a maintenance agreement with them annually, in order to make sure that we have the most up-to-date software, and if we have a problem with any hardware, they fix the problem or replace it. As a matter of fact, we have, on the time clocks, we have a platinum agreement that allows us, if a clock goes down, it allows us to get a clock from them within 24 hours of the time the clock goes down, even before we've shipped the clock back to Cronos for them to fix it. They give us another clock so that we don't have a lapse of more than 24 hours when a clock goes down. So, this is, again, the 28,000 dollars approximately is the annual maintenance agreement for, to keep Cronos current for the next year, beginning in February of 18.
Does the board have any questions?
I have a couple comments, well, questions. Did we ever replace the, I asked you this in the meeting, because last year when I asked, I went back and looked in my notes, the current time slips, our time machine, time and attendance machines we had were outdated, and they wouldn't replace those. So, that problem's fixed now?
It is Commissioner, we have all current clocks. The only exception to that is our 911 system still is working off, it's a Cronos-owned company, Stromberg, which was the company that we originally engaged-
That was the problem, yeah.
-back in 2007 when we started this project. One of the first places that we got up and running was 911, and they do a really good job up there staying on top of the system. We haven't converted those to the new Cronos system yet. Actually, I have a meeting scheduled with IT Friday this week to discuss the ongoing project of bringing 911 over to the Cronos system, at which point in time they'll have new Cronos clocks rather than the Stromberg clocks. So, yeah, we have replaced clocks where necessary. One of the places where we had issues with clocks, as I'm sure you're aware, was the county prison, and they do have three fully functional Cronos clocks now.
But they're not utilizing them?
The employees are, for the most part, using the clocks to punch in and punch out, but we had an issue with the gentleman who was managing the implementation at the prison, and he's out of work right now, so it's kind of held up the implementation. The people are using the clocks and punching in and punching out, but we have to work out all of the issues because there's problems with, you know, people missing punches, and we need to make sure that the shift commanders are looking at the system and making sure that the right punches are in. They need to make sure that if somebody has sick time, that sick time is entered into the Cronos system, so that gets fed into our payroll system. So, we are moving forward with prison implementation, but it's very, very slow because the gentleman at the prison who was working on it with us has been out for some time now, and we're looking to get an additional person dedicated at the prison so that we can move forward on the full implementation at the prison.
Thank you.
Per the warden, as of our conference call, he was looking to that individual so we can get this all up and running?
That's correct Commissioner, we don't have a name yet, but he was looking to find somebody who he could dedicate to the project.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to make a motion accepting a quote for Cronos Inc., do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
I'm gonna abstain from this, thanks.
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.
Thanks Tom. Seventeen dash zero three one zero?
Entering into an agricultural conservation easement, be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into an agreement acting through its county agricultural land preservation board for sale and purchase of the agricultural conservation easement with Elizabeth J. Hawansky for a 68.77 acre crop farm in Scott Township as attached here to, and Mr. Jerry Stiles, the executive director of the Conservation District is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning Commissioners.
Hi, Mr. Jerry.
This farm would be going into Lackawanna County's Farmland Preservation Program. It's owned by Elizabeth Hawansky. It is a tract near Griffin Pond Reservoir in Scott Township, is close to 69 acres. The total cost for the purchase of the easement is 171,925 dollars, and that funding is being provided for this parcel by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that goes directly to Mrs. Haw, how do you say your name?
Hawansky.
Hawansky.
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much.
Okay, does the board have any other questions? Like to make a motion entering into an agricultural conservation easement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
Thanks Jerry, thank you, Merry Christmas. Seventeen dash zero three one one?
Entering into a human services health services agreement be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County enters into a professional service agreement on behalf of Department of Health and Human Services with Omni Health for fiscal year July 1, 17 through June 30th, 2018, and our Director of Human Services, Mr. Bill Browning is here to answer any questions.
Omni is a counseling service that we will be using in the future to, for kids that are in our care. It is a neutral budget impact, it's simply another vendor in the pool of vendors.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning? Okay, like to make a motion entering into a human service health service agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks Bill, I know you're gonna be there for a little bit. Seventeen dash zero three one two?
A human service software agreement be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County enters into a professional service agreement on behalf of Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family with InfoMatrix Corporation for software development for our case management system effective January 1, 2018, through June 30th, 2018. Mr. Browning?
This is for our state-required IT system to track cases within child welfare, this is the Lackawanna County specific portion.
Okay, does the board have any questions? Like to make a motion entering into a human service software agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Seventeen dash zero three one three?
A human service legal services agreement be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County enters into a professional service agreement, Department of Human Services with Attorney Teresa Malowski-Pizak, Esquire, Mr. Browning?
It's a parent's attorney on dependency matters, parents are required to have an attorney present on these cases.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
I have some comments on that program, is the Guardian in item, is that what this is?
No, no, this is a parent's attorney, it's a equivalent of, to defense counsel in a criminal matter, this is pretty much a defense counsel on dependency matters.
Dependency matters in?
For child welfare abuse neglect cases.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to make a motion entering in human service legal service agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Yes, thanks Bill. Seventeen dash zero three one four?
This is a temporary license agreement be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County enters into a temporary license agreement with Steamtown 300 LLC for rental of space for the Festival of Trees starting the annual holiday event at a cost of 2,500 dollars from December 31st, 2017, to expire on January 15th, 2018, and Mr. Chris Calvi, our Acting Director of Arts and Culture, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning Commissioners.
Hi Chris, how are you?
Good morning Chief of Staff.
It's a great job this past weekend.
Thank you very much.
Great job.
It was a lot of help and a lot of cooperation. This year, the Festival of Trees Celebration is the roaring twenties, and the trees will be on display from December 8th through January 12th, 2018, with the opening reception this Friday at 5:30 to 8:00 PM, and we have in excess of 20 trees to date, and over the last several years, we've donated thousands of dollars to Toys for Tots, and the Marines will be present on Friday evening, so this is-
Nice. Does the board have any questions? To make a motion entering into a temporary license agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thanks.
Thanks Chris. Seventeen dash zero three one five?
This is a reimbursement agreement be resolved Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enters into a reimbursement agreement for Main Street Dixon City Phase 3 in Lackawanna County hereby authorize the approval of the reimbursement agreement with PennDOT, Rassistim, and Mr. Gary Cavill, our county engineer, is here to explain the agreement.
Good morning Gary.
Good afternoon Commissioners. This is for a reimbursement agreement that was previously approved on, I believe, February 8th, and this is for the intersections of Dundaff and Main Street and Boulevard and Main Street in Dixon City. What had happened was PennDOT Legal had separated the reimbursement agreement into two separate parts, and they actually changed the reimbursement agreement to another number for right-of-way utilities and construction. So, it was previously approved, but we need another resolution now since they've changed the actual reimbursement agreement number, and this is a reimbursement agreement between PennDOT and the county.
Okay, does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering to a reimbursement agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Thank you Commissioners.
Thanks Gary. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board.
Commissioners, Bob Bowles, Scranton. It was nice to see the Globe all lit up like that again, it brought back a lot of memories of time in the past, unfortunately, I wasn't here to see it, I was out of town on an emergency, dealing with somebody's life that I had to take care of, the power of eternity on, so. It was great to see something going on around here that could tell us where the potential and what the growth of the city can be. If we start cutting our expenses, making it a viable, livable city again, dealing with the school boards, dealing with the people that have really put us in the posture where businesses don't really want to come here, because they may be here temporarily, but the future gets very dim when you start looking at what you're gonna wind up paying out every day. The thing is, maybe next year it'll be lit up, again like you had it, and continue to keep it lit up, maybe put your rink back out again, only this year if you can't put it inside, next year put tents up and bring people back. You know, I was an individual that wanted to see a casino come to Scranton. I was gonna buy the mall and see that we could put a casino, but we could never get support from anybody, whether it was the Commissioners, the city, or anything, to send a letter to the gaming board to consider a temporary or a license for a mini casino in Scranton. Look what's happening now. Okay, what I saw in the past was the future of this city, a casino would have been a boom for this city. If you just saw a prime example of what happened at the Globe, imagine a casino where the mall was and adding things in instead of what we have there now. Instead of the city buying the mall, basically, for Basilika. I want the Commissioners to turn around and look into the parking issue there. We paid how many millions of dollars for parking spaces? Yet, the malls charging people to go in, we own those spaces, and they're not gonna be on the roof, we should have prime parking for our people in the city, that our money went to give them millions of dollars for these parking spaces, and something's gotta be done about it, because we paid for them and we want them. We don't want to pay on St. Patrick's Day to park in our parking spaces, they don't belong to them anymore, they're ours. So, we gotta start doing something for the people in this community, especially the parking spaces. When we take over the Globe and we're going in there, are we going to have to pay Basilika to park in his parking garage to come in to do county business, or is that gonna be free to the people doing business in the city? In other words, you come in from the county, you park in the garage, you get a stamp, there's no charge for it. Are we gonna be paying to park in that parking garage to do business with the county?
Isn't the mall parking free?
Pardon, no, no, not the mall, I'm talking the Globe store parking that we had there.
We, yeah, we can answer it later.
See, we got two issues, are we gonna pay to park in the garage to come and do business with the county? Or is it going to be free to people doing business with the county? That's my only issue that I had, and I think it should be free to the people doing business here. I think Basilika's getting a heck of a free ride in here, especially on the taxes, that they've modified his taxes even lower than what it should be, that place should be assessed at at least 25, 30 million dollars, and he's assessed at two or three million, or whatever it is, it's a minor thing. Yet, at the church I had, I was assessed at a half a million dollars because I didn't play ball here. So, there's a lot of issues here that's gotta be done. One of the things, Commissioner Cummins, that I had read about when I came back was an issue with the correctional care, a comment that you made, you didn't see anything wrong with him or know anything. I'm on the record here where I've waived my HIPAA rights about issues with Zalogo and correctional care, and they were serious issues, they weren't just something that was superficial. I think before any contract or any consideration be given to him, talk to some of the past employees that worked there. I think you need to do a very deep, in-depth examination of really what went on with him. I've made accusations to him, he was told to come before the prison board, he came, refused, and I waived my HIPAA rights, he can speak about anything he wants to do. I come from a medical background, I know what I'm talking about. You as one who's definitely in the medical field know what the word Plavix is, you know what its purpose is, and you know, when somebody's taken off it, you know the consequences. Those are just part of the allegations, okay? And man tries to act like he's a cardiologist, an orthopedic, and so on and so forth, neurologist and all. He's a DO, he has a medical background, but he's not specialized, that's why we have specialists. And the issues he created, and there are horror stories, and you'll get them, if you go in depth with the people that were there, inmates that came out of there, and some of the treatment that went on, that you're not aware of. And I think before we blow a trumpet for him, I think we really need to see who he really is, because we're moving forward to go against him for what he did, and we're gonna uncover a lot more than is on the top of the table right now. And if the last person that should be in there is the logo and correctional care, he had his opportunity, there's sufficient money, but the money should go toward the inmates and the prison and the medical treatment. And I'll give you one prime example, there was an individual in the medical unit, now, medical unit is the logo's, it's under his care, custody, and control, I was there. Yet, an individual who had dirty himself, I'll use kind words, all over the room, all over himself, yet the COs and the inmates had to go clean up- up after him. That wasn't a responsibility. That was Zalogo's responsibility. The ventilation in the room was horrendous. You couldn't even breathe in there until I raised issues. And I was threatened by the past warden that if I kept arguing and doing what I was doing, he'd try and find a way to send me upstate. Well, the ventilation systems got changed in there where the ventilation took the air out of the building and took it outside, not left it inside. So those were things that went on there. But that was Zalogo's responsibility. I own environmental companies, and what was being done was hazardous to someone's health because you didn't have the equipment. It's not just a pair of goggles and a pair of rubber gloves. You're dealing with somebody's feces all over the place. But he never took care of it. You had kids upstairs on the upper level in the medical unit. When these kids went in and out, the inmates had to go back into their cells like they were gods. They didn't even belong in there. That's for treatment of people with medical issues. And that's how we ran the show. It was all wrong. So before anybody goes way on beyond to consider this, take a much more in-depth examination. Go talk to the warden or the guards. Go talk to the inmates. Talk to the guards that are in the medical center down there that sit there. Get more information. You'll be surprised. I'm adamantly opposed, not only as a taxpayer, but as a person who was there and who was denied the treatment that I should have had. First of all, my social security benefits were taken from me. That's my money that went into the system that I should have been able to get a free pillow. I should have been able to get my medical treatment. I should have been able to see a cardiologist or an orthopedic surgeon. Yet, that money went for me. I didn't get it. Where did it go? Yet, this man did not or does not believe in outside treatment unless, I guess, you're almost dead. So some, I think, needs to be really seriously considered before we heap praise upon him. And I'm standing here. I'll be accountable for my speech, my actions, anything I have to say about him. There's nothing more than I'd rather than a face-to-face challenge with him right here on live, and let's see what he really has to say. I'd be glad to take him on. And putting that to the side, I don't know if I'll get here for the next meeting, but my annual Christmas dinner will be held on Christmas Day. It's the 24th year I'm doing it. It's open to everyone who doesn't want to be home alone on Christmas. All those attending will receive a takeout meal to go home with, and will deliver two meals to a family. Some people were abusing what we were doing there, and we had to cut back on it because our volunteers that were going out were actually being abused by people when they wanted six, seven meals. And they had the ability to come here. This dinner is open to people. You come here, you enjoy the camaraderie. It's an all-day buffet, so you're not in no hurry to be anywhere. And if you come pick up six meals, you could bring five people with you. That's the purpose of the meal, is for people to come and enjoy the day and celebrate Christmas among people, new friends and old friends. And that's why we're making some changes this year, that you need to attend the dinner and get a takeout. You can't just walk in off the street anymore and just say, "Give me a takeout. I'm going home with five meals." You have to attend the dinner. So bring the people there. Bring the kids there. There's toys. There's a Santa. There's everything there that you would have at home. In fact, it's even better. But this is the 24th year I'm doing it. So I'd like to extend that to everyone.
Congratulations. That's great. 24 years, Bob. That's wonderful.
I'm getting to start getting to like turkey after a while. But we're all ready to do it. We have Gus DiNetti's helping us out this year with the cooking of the turkeys and some other people. So, you know, we're spreading it across, and more and more people are picking it up, starting a program like that in Florida also. They're starting to see that people need to be with other people on Christmas. It's the loneliest day of the year. So we just ask everybody, bring your spirit. That's all it is. And I'd like to wish you guys a Merry Christmas, and it was great to see all the people starting companies and trying to do something here.
Nice.
And the cooperation, again, from the Commissioners and all in it. I think you're doing a hell of a job.
Thank you.
And thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Merry Christmas.
Unfortunately, I have to leave. I have things that are pressing on me today. So thank you.
You're right on the social security. I'll talk about that, too. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Martina Soden. I'm 500 Vine Street, Scranton, PA. I'm head of reference at the Scranton Public Library. And I'm going to talk about a program that's actually over the holidays. It's called Coding for Kids, and it's Learn to Code using the popular program Scratch. And this is at the children's library, and it's for ages eight to 18. And it's Tuesday, December 26th and Thursday, December 28th at 10:00 a.m. So I know parents, families, anybody's looking for something for your children to do over the holidays, have them come sign up for this program. Mathematics, science, the STEAM programs are so big now. To have them learn how to code and get started with coding early in their schooling is, it's a great thing. So space is limited. If they can call the library at 348-3000, extension 3038 to sign up, and we'll be happy to have them. Thank you.
Thanks, Martina. Thanks for coming in. Anyone else? Commissioner Cummings.
Is it cold in here? Is it just me?
It is a little cooler in here.
Thank you. Can we?
Turn up the heat.
The Lackawanna River thing, I think that's great. So I need to make sure I spread it out. Yeah, definitely. And for information, Joan had come up in regards to the pension fund. You know, I understand some concerns in regards to the pension fund, but when I spoke to the media in regards to this, I specifically said investments are up thanks to President Trump, correct? That should have been the headline. Do we ever give the president any credit around here? No, never will either. Will you ever give us credit up here? No, never will. The only place that actually has a surplus and a $7 million increase from investments for a six-month timeframe, but yet we get this, we get this headline and these people coming in here. Amazing. You know, even as a Tea Party activist, I used to come here and bust the Commissioners for two years I was on them, two years. And then I watched what Mike Washo and Corey O'Brien was doing, were doing. And I commended the work they were doing, and I followed them. I didn't read the paper about them. I watched ECTV to see what they were actually saying because I didn't believe anything that was in the paper. So you didn't see me coming here anymore because I was watching on ECTV, and I actually liked the work they were doing. All right? They were cutting areas. I didn't like some of the things. There are some things I definitely don't like that Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner O'Terryanny do, but there are some things I really do like. And those things we can agree on and get some work done in this government, and that's what we've been doing. So, like I said, you didn't see the Tea Party activists here after so long because they were doing the job that I felt.
Watching ECTV.
I thank God for ECTV. Thank you so much, Mark, for what you do. I appreciate it. I watch all of them. I watch the programs that he goes to. I mean, yes, I have a boring life. Okay. So I guess everybody knows that by now. But, you know, when there's a part of government that's actually doing a good job, can't you just give that one day a break for crying out loud? I mean, we got through a budget. We've cut over $10 million out of our budget. That's $10 million was cut that we would have possibly had to spend and either increase taxes or whatever. I mean, we went, our fund balance for our investment for our pensions, it's amazing, in six months, right? Let me just make sure I have these numbers correct because I told them to, to the Scranton Times, but they chose not to report it. As of December 31st, 2016, we went from $159 million. Okay, I'm just giving you a top average. Now we're at $172 million. That's amazing. That's huge. And I'm sorry, but I'm the Republican, and I'm taking the credit for our president. I'm going to do it. And that's all there is to it. That hasn't been seen ever in years. Like, that kind of increase, we're seeing increases that have not been seen in years. Our percentage went up from 12.6% to 13.26%. So in six months, we gained $7 million, and you guys are crying about $500,000. I'm sorry. I mean, I understand. I'm not real happy that we couldn't invest. I would prefer to invest in our pensions. I understand that. I think I would have done, I would have cut departments instead, which I was willing to do, and I was rejected. So. But that's the way it goes. You win some, you lose some when you're in the minority here, you know? So there's not much I can do about it. But I think we handled it the best way we could. We compromised on a bunch of things. You know, all three Commissioners were involved for the most part, except for this last, this last thing with the pension. So all I could say is investments are up because of President Trump. Thank you, President Trump. I appreciate it. And I'll take that any day of the week. I can't wait to see how it goes in the next six months. Our GDP is up 3.1% today. Our investment reports came out today. Everything's looking great. But we got to focus on Lackawanna County's $500,000. Okay. All right. That's enough on that. Bob Wallace came in, and I understand he's upset about this, but I think he shouldn't address that at the prison board, not here, really. And I'm going to stand by my statement on Dr. Zalogo, and I'm not going to be biased in my opinion. I'm just looking at costs. So I don't know. Commissioner O'Malley would know about more on that cell thing that he was talking about. I don't know who's supposed to be responsible. Commissioner O'Malley, who's supposed to be responsible for cleaning a cell after somebody defecates all over it? I have no idea. But shouldn't we bring that up in the?
They have block workers. That's what they pay.
I'm not sure why he feels the doctors should be responsible for that because I disagree with that.
They have all kinds of different workers that work inside the facility.
Yeah. But what I do agree with is his statement on social security benefits. What people don't understand is the government does not invest in your social security and Medicare. That comes from your paycheck, directly from your paycheck. The only people that invest in Medicare and social security are you and your boss, period. That's where the money comes from. So if you put $400 in your social security and Medicare this week in your paycheck, your boss is matching that $400, just so you understand that. That's where the money for social security and Medicare comes from. You know, it comes where nowhere else. Nobody else is investing money into your social security and Medicare except for you and your boss. The county is also investing that as the, as the boss of all our workers as well. So we also have to do that. But it is not government money. However, they see this federal government doesn't have a problem with stealing the money that we put in there, you know, and withholding it from a prisoner. I think that's disgusting. That is not government money. That's like them coming and saying, "Your 401K that you put your money into, we're going to suspend that because you went to prison." I disagree with that. That's, that is that person's money, and I agree with Bob Wallace on that statement. And I think the Times should do a report on that because that is outrageous that they take their money from them. It's like going into their savings account, anything where they put their own cash into it. And the government, because you go to prison, saying, "Well, I'm sorry, but I'm going to cut your savings account now. You can't have it. It can earn interest." That's insane. How are they, what if they have a family? I mean, that's ridiculous. I completely agree with Bob Wallace on that. I did not realize that they did that, and they should not take, he's saying they take it away from them. I'd like to know more about that and see if, you know, they take it away from them or if it's just suspended. I'm not sure how that works, but I think that's terrible to take somebody's, you know, try and take their social security money from them. And last, on a good note, the Globe was amazing. It was an awesome weekend. You know, the send-off was spectacular, I thought. And I just have been hearing about it over and over and over again on how wonderful it was. I've been getting emails and phone calls. And many thanks for having the ability to provide this to the public. And I just think it was absolutely amazing. So congratulations, Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner O'Terryanny. That was great. It was just great. And I'm thrilled to be a part of it and real excited. Now, let's move on and get the construction started and get it moving on, the construction part. Don't be dilly-dallying and holding it up. I want to be in there September 1st. So let's go, guys. Whoever, if you're listening, make it happen. Thanks and Merry Christmas.
Commissioner O'Terryanny?
I'll be excited about the Globe store when it's finished.
Yeah.
So, but I refrain. It's nice to have events for the public. I agree with that. I'm not upset. I was out of town. I wasn't around.
You go to New York? Yeah.
And as far as the pension, I was surprised in seeing in the paper that we had $1 million in the budget for 2016, and it wasn't paid. It wasn't funded.
It was 17, right?
Dare to do that, and it never happened.
16 for 17. That was the money we held back.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the stock market can be fickle, and it can go up and it can go down. And hopefully, it continues to rise, and Donald Trump continues to do whatever it is he's doing, which I don't understand, but that's another reason.
Deregulation, that's why. Yep.
At least that far. And our pension continues to grow. But I think it's, you know, I had $1 million in the budget for it. We didn't pay it. There may very well be a good reason, but I don't know it at this point. I was unaware of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob Wallace, about the parking. We do not control the parking and what's going to happen. We control the building itself. The parking will be whoever owns the parking lot, wherever they go, whether it's a meter, it's parking, whether it's over in the mall, wherever they may be. Getting back to the pension. You know, we worked really, really hard. Mr. Wallace, give me, how many years were there that the county didn't even put anything in to the pension whatsoever?
During the Washo O'Brien administration, the allocation given by the Commissioners in 2007 was zero, and 2008 was zero, and 2009 was zero. In 2010, they made a token payment of $65,733. Upon further checking this out, this was not a payment made directly from the county. It was a reimbursement from another insurance company. It was allocated toward the fund, and it was transferred into the pension fund at that time. In 2011, there was zero made for that allocation. In 2012 through 2016, annual allocations were restored to $500,000 to $600,000 a year. But there was a period of five years when I checked back on these, there was no allocation made at all during the Washo O'Brien administration.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, we work on behalf of the citizens and our employees. And there's not one thing in this world that we would do to ever hurt our employees, ever. We spoke to our financial experts, and they said this wasn't going to have any ill effect. You know, it's always good to have extra money in our general fund. It's always good to make sure we have money for a rainy day. And that's what we're doing. We go around here trying to save a nickel if we can. That's how this administration has been, you know? And I got to get into all of it. Six audits done on time, a stable bond rating, you know, our surveillance fee being taken away. We're doing a great job. And whatever our local media may be saying, you know, they're going to try to tar and feather us if they could, you know, why don't they look at the state? Why don't they look local at some other municipalities? Not us. You mean, our pension floats between 77 and 79%. You mean, that means that we'd have to, like, 79% of our employees, like, leave right now. That's not happening. That's not happening. We won $13 million on investments last- We won $13 million on investments last year. Listen, I understand that could come to an end, you know? And we'll put money in next year. There will be money in next year. But this year, we decided not to because we work on behalf of the citizens. We don't have any issues. Our government is run well. We have great directors and deputy directors and a great administration, and we're trying to do much, much more with so much less. And it shows. It shows every single day. So our local media should go look elsewhere when they're looking for issues, but they can't help themselves because it's time for them to tar and feather us now. But that's not going to happen because we are working hard every single day, and they'll just have to deal with it. And I'm very sorry that they have an issue with us, but we're here for the next two years, so they will deal with it for the next two years. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out today, and now I'd like to get into the nice stuff. December 8th, we're having our Festival of Trees. There'll be open reception. That's 5:30, 8:00 p.m. at the Marketplace in Steentown. 20 trees this year for fundraising for Toys for Thoughts. Please make sure you come out. It's a great opportunity for everybody. December 17th, we're going to be having our holiday celebration at the Electric City Trolley Museum. That will be 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Trolley rides with Santa, arts, crafts, letters, and Santa's going to be great for everyone. Also, there will be a trim a tree challenge. It was underway at area schools and art classes. We'll be competing with folks that can visit the Trolley Museum and vote with the winner of the prize on December 27th. So we have some great fun opportunities coming out in the community. And last but not least, we just had a fabulous weekend. And I don't know about any other government around here, but we're the ones that are investing in our future all the time, and that was an investment that we didn't have to do that, do we have to open up the Globe and bring the Marketplace there? No. Did we have to have skating? No. Well, we injected all those people into downtown Scranton, and I'll tell you what, if anything our local media should do, they should thank us for the great job we do, but they won't, and they can editorialize that because I don't care. But thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Yeah. [laughter]
I forgot about that. I didn't...